This workshop of the Prairie View City Council is now called to order. And the time is seven thirty-six. Ms. Johnson, would you certify the court, please?
House Leader Bola.
Speak up.
House Leader Randall. House Leader Jones.
Here.
House Leader Williams.
Here.
Councilor Wallace.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. And if we could stand for the invitation and pledge. Ms. Erden, if you would do the favor of a short prayer.
Okay.
Start us off, please.
Father God, thank you for allowing us to gather tonight to take care of the city business. Give us the guidance to do your will, not our will, what's best for the city. And we ask for your continued blessings on the city and the people who will make these decisions. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our title this evening is workshop to discuss the City of Prairie View two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty revenue and expenditure budget. And council, I'll allow you the option, council will go first, we'll entertain, we'll see whatever questions or concerns, comments from the audience at workshop. Council Wallace.
Uh, before we get into this conversation first, I want to apologize for my lateness. Uh, around six fifty-five, uh, something happened to someone that was near and dear to me today. Um, and so I was trying to handle that situation really quick, so I just want to apologize for my lateness. I would never want y'all to sit and just wait for, you know, I mean that I know the timeframe is for, so I just wanted to apologize on that behalf. And know that please just charge it, uh, to my head, not to my heart for the situation I have to deal with.
But you were here early.
Yeah, I was here at six o'clock. Around six fifty-five, something happened.
Before six.
Yeah, and then at six fifty-five, something happened. So, yes.
Thank you, councilman. Any questions on the budget or comments or thoughts from, uh, from the public in general for council's consideration? Okay, well, we'll, we'll start with, uh, Mr. Johnson, then we'll open it up in case he shares something that invokes some more thoughts and stuff. And then we'll get started with you, Ms. Reed. Yes, sir. Mr. Johnson.
Okay, first of all, council and mayor, I put on your desk revised pages. And if you need to, uh, substitute these pages for the original pages that you had in your book. Because of changes that we've made to the budget. We should revise page one, two, three, and four. It's the overall summary and revised pages to general administration. Also, I had given you revised pages earlier to public works, so hopefully you included those revisions in your budget. Is there anyone who does not have the revised pages for public works? This page, public works would be page, uh, fifteen and sixteen. And if you don't have it, I think I have them.
Councilman Jones has a question.
Yes, sir.
Was the changes like, uh, or numbers this type or what?
No.
What happened from the files that are proposed, budget?
What were the changes on page?
Okay, page one, the primary change was in franchise taxes. I, uh, got some additional data on franchise tax revenue and it increased.
You're going to share what that was?
It was primarily due to, uh, San Bernard Electricity. Uh, when I saw some information came in in the month of August. And, uh, their franchise taxes going up primarily because of the additional, uh, electrical uses that you're getting at your new, uh, complexes that are in the city. And see, I didn't have that when I originally put this information together. So, uh, franchise taxes primarily went up twenty-three thousand dollars. So that's what's reflected in the change in general administration revenue. Therefore, it also has to be changed on the overall schedule itself. That's on page one. So that was the increase in that.
Well, I just wanted to make sure I'm walking with this impact, the total.
Revenue went up.
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, so it, it went up in the total work.
No, it went up in general administration. And public works also went up because we added the, uh, the, uh, project that wasn't on the original.
What page is that, JJ?
Uh, well, if you look at page one, the increase is, is at the bottom there where we added the James Muse.
Right.
Line project, which wasn't on the original papers that you had, the million five project.
Okay.
So that, that's what made the big changes there. Also in public works, I added a, a separate column where we, for USW's proposed proposal that you have. So you can look at, uh, USW's proposal. Go ahead. That's on public works.
I know, but is this, is this, is this all of the changes for page one, for whole one, public works? Public works?
Yes, right.
Alright, so.
Public works, page one doesn't change for public works. I added, I added additional information in the detail. That's on page fifteen and sixteen. You have an additional column. Do you have that, Johnson? If not, I have it.
No, I have it.
Let me give you this.
Okay, so fifteen and sixteen?
Yeah. You put your new, the new pages in?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm showing two sixteens. Do you want us to use the one where you created the second USW column?
The only, the only change on that schedule is I added the column.
For USW budget?
For USW proposed, right. The, uh, the, the, the original column is if we budget, uh, next year without, uh, moving all, without accepting USW's current proposal. So we got the two laid side by side. So you make a decision.
So the proposed twenty nineteen budget is next to the USW proposal?
Right, exactly, exactly. So we, we choose, right now, on the, on the summary page, I have the one not using USW. And if y'all choose USW, then I will then put that one in place of the column, uh, where is that we would not use USW.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. But the one that's on there on the summary page right now is the column where we will not, we will not use their current proposal. Okay?
Okay.
Understood?
So that'd help to make the decision.
Right, exactly. So we still have to make a decision. Y'all have to make a decision on which way you want to go.
And this, this proposal's allowed us to add, what we talked about adding?
Yes.
What, what was it?
The only thing that you talked.
Public Works.
No, only one person. You talked about adding one person, but when I looked at it, we have two people that assist currently. See, the other person that they had, I looked at their numbers, one person that they had on there was a part-time person. And we have two in administration right now that do assist for the, uh, public works operations.
You mean accepting the billing?
Yeah, right, except the billing and what have you, right. And if you look at the USW proposal, one of those was a part-time person, and that's what y'all were addressing. But it, but in the, uh, in what's laid out here, we do have under the, uh, public works not using USW's, uh, proposal that they give you, you do have a full complement of workers, including a new public works manager. And, and that's broken out if you look at the payroll page.
What page is that?
That'll be page, uh, page seventeen.
And who's the new manager?
If you look at page seventeen, you'll, you'll see on there, uh, a director for public works, which you haven't had in the past because the mayor was, uh, taking care of those duties. But in this budget, we've laid out a director and with full complement of one, two, three, four, uh, us, uh, operators.
Now, I remember when he left, um, Cookie's actual name, our former public works director? Anyway, our former public works director was, at the time, our highest paid city employee. And, uh, so we've made some adjustments to be competitive, because it wasn't seventy then, so we brought it up to seventy to be competitive.
That's right.
Okay. So you're telling me I've been saving the city?
Forty thousand.
No, no. He was in the mid-fifties. He may work at the chief.
Oh, yeah, right, right. Well, I mean, compared to this, right, you're right.
That's, so right now, in public works, you have Mr. Glover, Mr. Silva, Mr. Villanova?
Yeah, I, I think Eric Ribio left.
Yes, Eric left and Eric was just recently replaced. Uh, Mr. Burgess, who used to be with the city. And, um, he had applied unbeknownst to me, but, uh, Ms. Viner brought that to my attention when we were talking. And I remember we were in the middle of some of the street repair stuff. That's, that's how the work got done so quickly. He used to be involved in helping to repair streets in Navasota, which made him, uh, very interesting to me before, but he had gone on to a, another situation, um, and some schooling too. But, uh, but he's back and we've been having him, uh, working with Mr. Glover. And the roads, the streets that were on the list with potholes on the last couple of agendas, they've been taken care of.
Have, have, have you went out to see those streets, Mr. Man?
Yes. Yes. And, uh, we're looking at, and there are a couple of other things. I think it slowed down today because of the, uh, the rain and the asphalt. You know, you don't want to lay it while it's wet.
Can I get back to it, bud?
Yes.
Okay. Can I?
This is how we save the money on the budget.
I know. I, I want to just get back to the current budget. Because there's some items that I do want to inform y'all about.
Okay, go ahead.
In the area of public works, go ahead.
So, uh, so with, with this proposed budget, it would give us a public works director as well as four?
Exactly what you see on page seventeen. Look at page seventeen.
So the same people?
Plus the public works director.
Okay.
And retaining, retaining four operators.
Alright, so yeah, I know, alright. Alright, so you said that Mr. Eric left, right?
Yes.
Alright, and we replaced him?
With Burgess.
Okay, and so?
Bogus, B-O-G-G-E-S-S.
Alright, so that would leave us, uh, administrator with Mr. Durham.
The other two administrators are under general administration that work, that help out. They're in the general administration department, but they, they help out.
Okay, but you're confusing because they're not listed.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to.
Which is, okay, I know, I know, because we was talking about, uh, having six, because you know, uh, public, I mean, USW has submitted to us a plan.
Only one more.
With, yeah, so.
But it was part-time.
Okay, that's, that's what I was saying. So when you, when you said the number four kind of threw me off, but you, you, alright, Ms. Durham, so there's a six with the public works.
Yeah, but the other person is in, as far as the budget go, is listed under general administration.
That is why.
Because they do.
Both.
They, but they help with permits, they answer.
They, they do both.
General city.
Because the public works activity is primarily when the bills go out.
Well, 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 Mr. Johnson, you're, you're adding to your own confusion.
Yeah.
If we follow your precept and stay on the budget?
Yeah, right.
They are not on this page.
Okay, they're not on this page.
So let's leave them where they are and they help, but, uh, when, I mean, we got people in this room as well as myself. When those desks are empty, we sit in them, so, and we're not on the budget either, so.
Okay. The, 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 go ahead.
I'm asking because it, it's in, it's in comparison to, to what, when, it, it kind of plays an impact on what decision the council makes on whether or not they go with USW or with our proposed budget, so.
Go ahead.
So we'll be sharing one person, that person has been Mr. Cortez, in my career.
Miss Co- and Miss, uh, Hayes. Primarily Miss Hayes. Not Miss Cortez, primarily Miss Hayes. But like I'm saying, it, it's there, it's just on another page, that's all.
Alright.
Okay. Uh, the other thing that I want to share with you guys is, as far as public works go, I have included in here a strategy. If we got the worst scenario from the university, that we had to pay them on this debt. And what's in here, let me just kind of just finish this, this point, the point I want to make to you. What I've done is I've budgeted in here the worst scenario on the debt, which is about eight hundred thousand dollars. The other portion is a hundred and thirty-something thousand, which we plan to pay that this month. The original note, the five hundred thousand dollar note.
Stay, stay keep going.
Yeah. So, so the strategy here, in this budget here, is to take that eight hundred thousand, the worst scenario, pay it down to six hundred thousand, and then enter into a agreement with the university, a seven-year note, and that's what I budgeted in here. A s- six hundred thousand, seven-year note at five percent interest rate. And, and that's in here under.
Six hundred thousand what? Five percent?
Five percent.
Yeah, a six hundred thousand dollar note over seven years at five percent interest rate.
And, and that's pretty similar to the one.
Yeah, the one we got now is at four percent. So I, I, I took the worst scenario at five percent, and that's what's budgeted in here.
Like, you said, what are we looking forward to pay this year?
No, I'm just saying, I, I budgeted the worst scenario as if, we're, we're still in negotiation with the university, okay? We owe them roughly eight hundred thousand dollars.
Close to nine hundred, but good.
Yeah. But we can't pay, given our current cash situation, we can pay it down to six hundred thousand dollars. Now, so for budget going forward, we had to put something in here. And so to, you always take your worst scenario when you're budgeting. Not, yes, ma'am.
So basically, you're taking the eight hundred, subtracting the, uh, the hundred and thirty thousand that we gonna pay?
Yeah. Well, no, no, it, it's a million something if you include the hundred and thirty thousand.
Okay, so you're saying we gonna pay the hundred and thirty thousand?
Right. That's a separate note.
Okay.
That's the original note, the five hundred thousand dollar note.
So we gonna pay the hundred and thirty thousand first?
Right.
Then we gonna pay the eight hundred thousand down to six hundred thousand?
Right. That's a strategy. That's a strategy.
I'm just making sure I understand.
When do, when do we pay this hundred and thirty thousand though?
We plan to pay that this month.
It was paid two days ago.
What, did we pay it yet?
Done.
Okay. But it, it.
So go on to the next numbers.
Okay. So in this budget here, the worst scenario is the eight hundred thousand dollars. We'll pay it down to six. What I have budgeted in here is a note for six hundred thousand dollars, which is very similar to the original note, which is five hundred thousand.
At seven years, we won't owe the university.
That's right. That's right. And that, that's what's budgeted in here.
Actually, that's not true.
But, but anyway, uh.
No, hold on.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hold on, let me address councilman's situation, because he asked a question. The, un- until we reach a different and better agreement with the university, that particular amount gets added on each month. And let, until we build, which takes, I understand, at least roughly eighteen months or so, our own wastewater treatment plant, we're still on the university's scenario. And that goes up roughly to two hundred fifteen, twenty thousand dollars every month. That's how this bill got so high. When the university first made that change, roughly close to a year before I came in, it was not addressed by the council. So it continued to accumulate, and it was only when we got ready into the budget stuff that, you know, they were telling me the budget was balanced, and I'm looking at this bill and say, wait a minute, we got a bill we haven't paid. So it's, it's working out. The part he's talking about is, um, we've been having meetings, Councilwoman Williams and I have been taking the lead on that, on trying to address this situation. And we're getting it closer to a head, and there's some, uh, folks that, um, I'm in touch with now because it just seems like, uh, we may need to take it to another level, but go ahead. I just want to make sure you knew it wasn't going to be over so that.
Well, the other thing that I've done in this budget, or a scenario again, is I have budgeted wastewater treatment at the level that they're billing us, not at the discount that we're paying. And with that in mind, worst scenario, this budget is taking that into consideration. And not, we don't have a proposal to increase the, uh, sewer rates. So this budget right here, your water rate and your sewer rate is the same as it currently is. Now, there is a caveat, that if we see that after we sit with the university and our worst situation gets worse, then we might cause, utilities have to pay for themselves. Then we might have to revisit the situation. And if it calls for a rate increase, then we, we can look, we have to look at it during the year. Because we eventually have to come to an agreement with the university. We cannot continue to only pay a partial, partly bill.
Well, the, the very last option is a rate increase, so we'll just go on and it's not in the budget, so.
That's not in there, but I'm just saying, as a caveat, we'd have to revisit it during the year if that presents itself. But again.
Well, the other, the other option is doing, uh, doing a bond where the city does it and deals with this. There've been some meetings that I've had, so let's go with the business side.
Yeah.
Because our residents have certainly suffered enough over the years.
Exactly.
The rate itself is too high, in my mind.
But this current budget, there is no rate increase proposed. I want to let y'all know that.
For wastewater?
For wastewater.
Okay.
Or, no, sewage. Uh, now, for trash go, it depends on our trash, our new trash contract. If it goes up, then trash might have to be adjusted, because we have to bill out the trash based on what we're charged.
Well, no, the trash contract was just renewed not that many months ago, so it's not going to change this budget cycle.
Republic hasn't owned up on the trash pickup because they missed too many days not picking up trash to be increasing.
Normally, you have what they call a cost of living increase.
But, but anyway, there, there, there's one change in this budget.
Right, yeah, there's no change. So I just want to make that clear. Now, let's, let's shift over to debt service, because there's something in there. Yes, sir.
Can you point to me on, on what page is like the new rating, which would be paying the university that you have budgeted?
Oh, look at, uh, wastewater treatment on page sixteen. Sew- sewage disposal. Look, see the line says sewage disposal?
Yes.
The amount that we're looking at there is three hundred eighty-four thousand dollars. Now, that's the same whether or not you go with USW or, or we stay with us.
Okay.
Because that, that, that's a, a bill to the uni- to, to you, to, to the city itself. Go ahead.
So the last year, it wasn't?
Pardon me? Last year ran about three fifty-two, but we didn't pay that amount.
Yeah, but I'm saying, so with the, with the university increase, how did we wind up on more money when we paid just about four thousand dollars less than what you proposed?
You referencing the original note?
We weren't paying the, the disputed amount that they added, the admin fee with, is it SSC or SCC?
SSC.
SSC, and they added the admin fee or the fees for, who's the company that y'all used to have?
Seven Trent.
Seven Trent. So they added two admin fees, and in meeting with them, uh, my initial position, and that hasn't changed, is none of us involved were here when the original agreement was, was set. And in requesting Olson before and our current city attorney to do public information requests, the university and Texas A&amp;M system were able to give us nothing except the bills they'd already sent. And that, well, thanks to Mr. Johnson, what, just a few months ago, he found a document that is referenced in another document that we did find in nineteen seventy-two. And it was the Texas A&amp;M system and the Houston Galveston Area Council who did this, not Prairie View A&amp;M. So dealing and negotiating with Prairie View A&amp;M, to me, is, in, in a sense, has been counterproductive. But now that we've got that document, it's a game changer, because it actually states in there, and he gave all of us and council a copy, that when the city was mature enough, the wastewater treatment disposal plan operation would be turned over to the city. Well, that might explain why they somehow couldn't find this document. So it's, again, it's a different discussion, so I'm going.
But, but, back to my original question. So what I'm basically asking is, if, even if we put four thousand dollars additionally in this budget line, I, would that not still make us be behind on payments with the additional charges in which they have added?
No, the difference is in interest and principal. You have, if you, in this budget, what I just told you, the, the projected loan, if we have to pay that money back, I have budgeted, the loan payment is reflected in, in the, the line item that says interest. Uh, interest bank loans, the twenty-two thousand four, on page fifteen. If you look at, where it says, uh, bank loans, the twenty-two thousand four is the interest portion. And if you go back over to page sixteen and look at debt principal paid, forty-eight thousand five. That's the principal portion of the, of the note. So that's where that is. That's, that's paying the loan back, okay? The line item that says wastewater treatment is the actual monthly, the twelve months that you will incur, October through September in the new year. That's what's in that line item. Alright, the other thing that I want to bring to your attention, and this was requested by one of your council members, is over in debt service. In debt service.
Page.
Uh, go to page nineteen and twenty. One of your council members came up with the suggestion that in this new budget period, the city purchased some land for development.
Let me say it again?
That the city purchased some land for development.
And you just added in, developed what?
What I, I, what I built in here was the acquisition of land valued at two hundred thousand dollars at a, a seven-year note of, uh, five percent interest, which is included in the, uh, loan principal and the, uh, interest on loans, included in the, in those two line items. That's if y'all exercise that option.
I still don't see what it was, this land was supposed to build on it.
It's, it was just, it was just acquire some land. It ain't defined.
I think that.
Go ahead.
I wasn't the council member that came up with this, didn't know any gig about it. But to speak on, I think actually that it's not such a bad idea, especially going to the fact that if we do phase out of this agreement with the university or however, the city choosing to move forward, that having some land to be able to put our own water treatment facility somewhere in the city would not be a bad idea because then you own the land to be able to put a water treatment facility there and to be able to phase out. So that way, we won't at the last minute when we phase out, uh, the university, be trying to buy some land and then try to move forward the process. The process can work simultaneously when you get down to the last few years of the agreement.
Yeah, the, the general thought.
No, no, the, the, the concept in general is good, and I agree with you, Councilman Jones. But that's why I say, purchase the land for what? Because you only have specific areas that you can build a wastewater treatment plan. And for us, that would be in the southern part of the city. And if you bought it in the northern part, eastern or western, it's not zoned for that.
Yeah.
So we need to know before we buy it, we need, you know, because the cities just don't own land. The, uh, hold on.
Protect it to me.
Hold on.
Go ahead.
The city has owned University Drive in Echoes, a small piece by Echoes and Santee. And the land by Clark, on the corner of Clark and Thompson, I believe, is, is. and the land by Clark, on the corner of Clark and Thompson, I believe it's, it's the Higgs old house. They've owned that somewhere in the timeframe of ten-plus years. We've had to maintain it, we've had to keep it clean because it's been a dumping ground, because it's vacant and nobody's living there because there's no, nothing built on it. And the city doesn't pay itself taxes, so we've been losing an average of six, seven thousand a year for ten years or more, which would pay for a couple of police officers because the city has been sitting on land. So it hasn't occurred, again, before we buy it, we, and, and we've said this as people that come in here. You knew that was zoned for such and such when you bought it. So if we don't know what we wanna do with it, it's really difficult to make a buying decision on what it is because whatever we wanna do has to fit in that area. Because we're no different than the others, we would have to come through a zoning change and everything else.
Again, it's a budget item. You don't have to do it. But again, it is included in here, okay? And those right there are some of the specifics that I wanted to bring to your attention. Of, with that, we pretty much have, again, what's presented to you is what the mayor and the department heads have come together with. And so I'm, I'm open now to any questions that y'all may have.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
Where in the budget, could we look at our source, building official? Where would that be?
Right now, this budget doesn't have a separate building official position. It does have the new engineer. And I've spoken with the engineer, and it's thought that, you know, some of those duties could be handled by the engineer.
But I think our neighboring cities with the development and how smooth that, that their process is looking from a point of view. I think it's time for us to start trying to learn, you know, or copycat, to say the least, what our neighboring cities have been doing because it's been working pretty well with them getting investors, development process, staying out of the news and out of the media with the way that they have done things. So if you could on the next budget, I think, because we all look, well, can't speak, but I agree for us to have a building official and the city probably gonna move forward with having a building official.
Would that building official be a contract person?
Yes.
Because you know, my opinion, it should be a contract person. Because you don't have enough activity for a full-time person to pay the kind of salary that they would command.
But the, the engineer in having work.